Recording in progress.
Good evening. Time being shortly after seven o'clock, I'll call February 26, 2025 meeting of the Franklin Town Council to Water. Please pause for a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I was like, what's going on over there?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All citizens are welcome to attend public meetings in person. To view the live meeting remotely, citizens are encouraged to watch the live stream on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel or the live broadcast on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29. Meetings are also archived by Franklin TV on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel and show on repeat on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29 for those who miss the live meeting. To listen to the meeting remotely, citizens may call in using this number 929-205-6099. This will not permit participation in the meeting. To participate in the meeting remotely, citizens are able to join a Zoom webinar using the webinar ID number 825-4353-5467, then hit the pound sign. Once again, the webinar ID is 825-4353-5467. Any participants who wish to speak during the webinar must enter their full name and email address when joining the webinar. All participants will be automatically muted upon joining the webinar. In order to speak, participants who have entered full name and email address will need to select the raise hand function to request to be unmuted. All speakers will be required to state their full name and street address before commenting. Okay, tonight Counselor Delarco will not be in attendance and will not be participating remotely. Upcoming town-sponsored events, the Joint Budget Subcommittee will be holding their next listening session on March 4 at 9:30 in the morning at the Franklin Senior Center. Please join us for open discussions on the fiscal year 2026 budget, feedback on last year's override budget question, the structural deficit this coming year, and the priorities of the community. So please join us if you are able. The Franklin Senior Center will be temporarily closed from March 5 through March 14, 2025, to allow for necessary building repairs. Vital services will continue to take place in varying alternative locations. A list of the alternate locations can be found on the Franklin Town website. The town of Franklin is excited to welcome Michael Bobbitt, Executive Director of the Massachusetts Cultural Council, and Emily Devlin, LICSW, Head of Strategic Partnerships and Clinical Innovation at Art Pharmacy for Community Conservation on how the arts can play a vital role in supporting health and well-being in Franklin. Join for a community conversation Wednesday, March 5, from 12 to 2 p.m. at the Black Box Theater in Franklin. Okay, next item on the agenda, citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes on a matter not on tonight's agenda. In compliance with General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, the Open Meeting Law, the council cannot engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during citizen comments. The town council may ask the town administrator to review the matter. Nothing herein shall prevent the town administrator from correcting a misstatement of fact during citizens' comments. Is there any citizen in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Is that a half a hand or is that a whole hand? Please, name and address, please.
Yes, sir. Steve Sherlock, 13 Magnolia Drive, Community Information Director, Franklin Matters, Franklin Public Radio. Three quick things. One, for those who are participating in the joint budget sessions, you should be aware that they are available on a watch, listen, read format. So we do have the TV video. I do have the audio available via Franklin Matters, and the transcript is now available for those sessions and will be in the future. Secondly, the radio station has enhanced its radio schedule. You may or may not have noticed, but if you go to wfr.fm, available anywhere, anytime on the internet, or 1029 in the Franklin area. We've expanded the hours, so it's starting at 7 o'clock, although we don't have a show there yet, but it starts at 8 and it goes to 5. So we're covering more of the quote "drive" time. So some of my particular sessions will be now on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and then on a Saturday afternoon, back-to-back-to-back. The schedule and details on Franklin news. We're also, because of that new enhanced schedule, inserting, and we still have to figure out the press release and how to figure out it, tell you, the quick, short way is if the show doesn't go the full hour, then either at the 40th or the 50th minute, there'll be about a two-minute update. So at the beginning of the week, it'll be a quick outlook as to the meetings that are coming and a look back at the week that was with at least an audio link to go for the details, et cetera. We'll have the capability so that if something happens on a Monday that we need to let people know on a Wednesday, we can now insert it almost live into the radio. We've never had that before. So just want to make everybody aware, changes are coming. There will be a press release to let everybody know, but wfr.fm is becoming more real-time even though it's all canned. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda?
No, I'm good, Steve.
Dave, School Committee Chair, Dave Callahan.
Dave Callahan, 30 Plains Street, as Chairman Mercer mentioned, Chair of the Franklin School Committee. Mentioned last meeting, Chairman Mercer and I were chatting a bit ago and thought we can kind of, I can kind of come here, use this opportunity to kind of let everybody know what's happening with the schools and during the school committee meetings. And so we take our three-hour meetings, going to condense it now to three minutes right now. I'm going to go very quick. If people want a little bit more, then Steve Sherlock and I do chalkboard chats where we recap every single one of our meetings, and we do our best to keep it within 30 minutes. That's right on Franklin Matters and wherever you want to get your podcast from as well. So at the last school committee meeting, we voted to approve Superintendent Jagir's budget, which is really kind of falling in line with what the town administrator was kind of projecting and forecasting out for line item 300 for the schools way back, I think, in the fall during some of those early joint budget meetings. And as Counselor Hamblin had pointed out a couple of months ago, if you have any questions about the budget, it's all right there on our website. This is for everybody in the public. You know, we have a whole page dedicated to the budget. You can kind of click in, look at FY '26. We have the entire budget book, which looks at it from like a 3,000-foot view, but then it goes down to looking at how much does it cost to kind of run each of the schools. Has budget presentations that got included to provide additional context. And if you really want to get into the weeds, you can look at the line item breakdown where it says you can account for every single dollar of the budget, line by line, and the Superintendent Jagir's entire staff, and especially, I want to give credit to School Business Administrator Ms. Malotti, because in that line item, she also added an extra column of just notes that really kind of provide additional context to the entire budget. So it's fantastic, all on our website. And looking ahead, the big story of the past year has been all about the transformative reorganization that the schools are undergoing and where we're really going from 10 schools down to seven. It's going to provide a much better educational opportunity for our kiddos, and it doesn't, it helps that it also saves the taxpayers about $2.5 million annually. It's about $1.9 million in savings from the school budget. And then, as Jamie had kind of pointed out in the joint budget memos, the facilities are also seeing some savings as the school footprint is decreasing. A lot of great stuff happening there that are going to be, in March, have a lot of our meetings kind of dedicated towards the reorg, starting with, it should be, the transportation updates, because it has been a question that came up a few times. I know, talking about transportation, how is this going to get impacted with the reorg? Next year, as you can kind of see within the budget, the big yellow bus company is going to be increasing their fees by about almost 13% next year that we kind of have to take on the chin. However, Colin, the Director of Operations, has been doing an outstanding job at so many different projects throughout this entire process, but also looking at transportation to really kind of maximize efficiency, to both drive down the cost and also try to minimize the traffic congestion as well with all the busing. That's going to happen in March. Our next meeting is March 11. And so for any folks, you know, please feel free to, you can always kind of obviously tune in or come on down to council chambers as well when we have our meetings on Tuesday. Probably should have mentioned this before I left the house, but I will say, my wife has been known to bake cookies before our school committee meetings. So maybe that might happen if you come and join us on the 11th as well. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dave. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone out there in Zoom land that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from February 5, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, additions, deletions. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We have no proclamations or recognitions this evening, no appointments, no public hearings, no license transactions, and no presentation discussions. We go on right to legislation for action.
Zippity-doo.
This is amazing.
There is an executive session. Okay, legislation for action. Bylaw Amendment 25-924, a bylaw to amend the Code of the Town of Franklin at Chapter 82. Fees, municipal service, this is the second reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion, second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Move bylaw amendment 25-924.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Jamie, quick overview.
This is, through Mr. Chairman, this is the second and final vote required to update the ALS and BLS rates that the council unanimously approved at their last meeting.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve bylaw amendment 25-924. A majority roll call votes required.
Oh, yes.
Clerk will call a roll.
This is a roll call.
I know. Go ahead. I'm glad my chairman, he's not at his best tonight.
I thought you were going to blame your R. C.
No, of course not. I don't blame bugs. Sheridan?
Yes.
Quomey Ledger?
Yes.
Frangillo?
Yes.
Chandler?
Yes.
Plegree?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Jones, yes. Chair?
Yes.
Eight and one absentee.
Motion carries. Thank you, Glenn.
You're welcome.
Okay, Resolution 25-05, free cash to stabilization accounts transfers. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-05, appropriation of free cash to stabilization account transfers. Total amount requested, $1,503,850. The purpose, continued funding of stabilization funds per town policy. I'm going to read the fund that it's transferred to, the reason for the transfer, and the source it's from, as well as the amount. OPEP Trust Fund, continued funding 10% of free cash. From free cash, $52,850. Firetruck stabilization, seven-year plan, free cash, $100,000. Fields stabilization, projected 2027 field replacement, free cash, $150,000. Budget stabilization, continued funding, free cash, $1 million. Property acquisition, continued funding, free cash, $200,000. Total free cash appropriation of $1,505,850. Finance Committee meeting actions voted unanimously, six to zero, to recommend $1,503,850. Motion being moved and voted by the town council that the sum of $1,530,850 be transferred from free cash to the OPEP Trust Fund and the Firetruck Fields Budget Property Acquisition Stabilization Accounts. Any amounts or purposes outlined above, this resolution should become effective according to the provisions of Town of Franklin Home and Charter.
Move Resolution 25-05.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Jamie?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. This was inadvertently left off the last agenda. These require a separate vote than the other free cash appropriations. And I do want to note the, just for the public certification, the commitment from last year from the council to replenish the budget stabilization fund. As you all know, we're about to go out to borrow at some point soon for the fire truck, but also in the future for Police Station in Remington-Jefferson. And this will be looked on very favorably from our bond rating agencies, for sure. So appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair, I just want to thank the administration for putting the $1 million back into the budget stabilization fund. I think that was one of the things that we were really worried about. And did this go to the, did this go to the budget?
Yeah, we did this as part of, last year, we said the first thing that we would be doing, was put.
Wait, but did this go in front of the capital budget?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So and then, okay, then I want to thank the Capital Budget Committee as well for this. That's, that's all. I just want to make sure it was. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Jones, you have your hand up?
Yes, just a quick question through you, Mr. Chairman, to the TA. I'm just kind of throwing it out there just as a general comment. How are we doing on, how are we doing on our bond rating? And why is that so important? Because I know you say it a lot during the budget season.
Well, I mean, number one, you know, our bond rating is still AAA. We're going out. The fire truck is going to be delivered in the next few months, so by June 30, we'll have to go out and formally borrow for that money. That'll be my budget presentation next week. And it's good news that it's here because that truck would be a lot more expensive and the delivery time would be almost double the amount of time to get that ladder truck. So we appreciate the fire chief and his leadership on that. But also, the bigger issue or the longer-term issue is the Police Station in Remington-Jefferson, Horace Mann borrowing. The big reason, there's a couple of them. One, a AAA bond rating is the highest rating you can get by rating agencies. And I think as Ann Bergen actually really eloquently put it one of the subcommittee meetings recently, you know, you can't get a AAA bond rating by mismanaging or doing poorly on your audits and getting management letters. It's really a sign of the highest level of fiscal health that you can have in the community. And so that's very important for us, but that's also very important for all of you to reassure the taxpayers and the voters in this community that we're doing everything to the best of our ability. That's important. Financially, Counselor Jones, interest rates suck up a lot of capacity in the budget and they increase costs for taxpayers. And having a AAA bond rating ensures that we get the most competitive interest rate when we do go out to borrow. So, you know, actually, a victory of that was certainly Schmitz Farm in Maple Hill, where before the interest rates really skyrocketed in the last few years, we were able to get those under the gun at a very low rate. So any way we can save people money, certainly on interest, my position on interest has been very publicly well-known, but it's really an important thing for the taxpayer to have that AAA to reduce interest rates when you go out to borrow.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, no, I'm very happy that we're, I think a lot of us took some grief when we took that money last year to help save some jobs, and it worked out. And I wanted to tell people, we're very happy that we're able to put it back in, because there were some people that did not have the faith in us that it was going to go back in. So they went back in, and now we're going to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Any other counselors? The only thing I'll say is, the three most important letters this council gets to deal with are those. And we need to maintain those three letters.
Absolutely.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-?
Zero five.
Zero five. Majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bylaw Amendment 25-925, Amendment to Sewer System Map, Raymond Street. This is the first reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is bylaw amendment 25-925, Amendment to Sewer System Map. A bylaw to amend the Code of Town of Franklin, Chapter 139, Section 139-14. Sewer System Map being enacted by the Franklin Town Council, Chapter 139, Section 139-14 of the Code of Town of Franklin entitled Sewer System Map. Exhibit A map be amended by adding as an eligible location on the following subsection 139-14 Sewer System Map, Exhibit A, extending sewer system to provide town sewer service to a duplex-style house proposed for future construction on a vacant lot located at 57 through 59 Raymond Street. The proposed extension will extend the existing sewer main by approximately 40 feet of a new PVC sewer main and will require the installation of a new sewer manhole. This bylaw amendment shall become effective until all conditions agreed. I'm sorry?
Shall not become effective.
Oh, my apologies. The bylaw amendment shall not become effective until all conditions agreed to between the property owner and the Franklin Department of Public Works are satisfied. This bylaw amendment shall otherwise become effective according to the provisions of Town of Franklin Home and Charter.
Move bylaw amendment 25-925 to a second reading.
Second. Motion and second. Discussion. Jamie?
Through, Mr. Chairman, the next two votes are to extend the water and sewer map up to the end of Raymond. Just in case people don't know where Raymond is, it's right next to the food pantry. It goes up all the way in the back there, up a short way. I will say also, if you read the letter from the town engineer and the DPW director, there are some easement issues where some of the other property approaches upon this property. The applicant to Counselor Jones's reading right there, they've agreed to give the town all the proper easements to deal with the drainage situation up there. And this is really their only ability to get water and sewer because the site is not really their only ability to get water and sewer, because the site is not large enough to deal with their own private situation. So this is the last parcel on that road. So that's why the recommendation is coming forward from the D P W, to extend the sewer map, that one parcel, to that, to that one potential duplex that's going to get permitted at the end of Raymond.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Councilor Jones?
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, through you, to either Jamie or the D P W director. I don't see him here. There he is. There you go, Bruce. Forty feet of PVC sewer line? Is that the norm for sewer line extension?
Mr. Chairman, Bruce Kennedy Public Works Director, through you. This is kind of unique. It's actually, the existing sewer pipe that we have, there's actually ten feet from the property line. So it's going to be extended forty feet, so that way they can go on there. They can tie it. But they'll still own, you know, we own them, that, the forty feet extension is ours, and then the line that actually is going to go into the duplex will be their responsibility.
And PVC is the normal type of material that you use?
Oh, yeah.
For that, okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to move by law amendment twenty-five dash nine two five to a second reading. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. By law amendment twenty-five dash nine two six, amendment to water system map, Raymond Street, first reading. Clerk will read the by law amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is by law amendment twenty-five dash nine twenty-six, amendment to water system map. A bylaw to amend the Code of Town of Franklin at Chapter one seventy-nine, Section one seventy-nine dash nine one, dot one. Water system map being enacted by the Town Council, the Town of Franklin, that, that Chapter one seventy-nine, Section one seventy-nine dash nine dot one, of the Code of Town of Franklin, entitled Water System Map, Exhibit A, map be amended by adding as eligible location the following. Section one seventy-nine dash nine dot one, Water System Map, Exhibit A, extending water main to provide town water service to a duplex-style house, proposed for future construction on a vacant lot located at fifty-seven, fifty-nine Raymond Street. The proposed extension will extend existing water main by approximately fifty feet of new ductile iron water main. This by law amendment shall not become effective until all conditions agreed to between the property owner and the Franklin Department of Public Works are satisfied. This by law amendment shall otherwise become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home and Road Charter.
Move by law amendment twenty-five dash nine two six to a second reading.
Second. Motion and second discussion. Jamie, anything to add?
Nope. Same.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to move by law amendment twenty-five dash nine two six to a second reading. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. My favorite. Resolution twenty-five dash eleven, cable funds in support of PEC service and programming per Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection fifty-three F and three-quarters. Clerk will read the resolution.
Motion to waive the reading, sir.
Is there a second? Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to move resolution twenty-five dash eleven.
Second.
Motion, uh, and seconded to approve resolution twenty-five dash eleven. Discussion. Jamie?
I let you guys talk about this one.
I think we have this one. I think we have this one down. Any questions or comments?
I just prefer that we just say what it is. This is the receiving of funds from the local TV providers, which helps fund our Franklin TV.
Exactly. Thank you for saying that. Okay, seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash eleven. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Town administrators, you have any? I knew.
She likes that.
Town administrators, you have any?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So just looking out, just for those that are interested in the budget, next week, March fifth, is my preliminary budget update. I will say the numbers will have changed since the budget sessions. And so if anybody's interested in it, what's likely to be the cornerstone of the debate over the next month will be presented next week, on March fifth. I'm going to go through my traditional slideshow, to go through all the numbers, the highlights and that such. So for people out there that are interested in that, please come to that. You already read the joint budget meetings. Two other announcements. Merchi, that you approved the liquor license. I just want to be transparent with everybody. They have actually withdrawn that liquor license application. And so they did write to us and the chair and the town attorney this week, so I just want to make sure the minutes do reflect that. They have withdrawn their application. We did send the approved version from the council to the A B C C. There was nothing, just so folks know, there was nothing that the A B C C sent back to us that was any red flags. I just don't, don't know exactly what else to say. It may have been some sort of business issue, but they did send in withdraw, so that license is not going forward. And one that I think you all will want to spread around the news, we did get official confirmation from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts like a week ago, that on August thirty-first of this year, the Best Western Hotel will be closed for the emergency shelter program. So for those of you that are concerned, or have had concerns about that issue throughout the community, this August, and you'll also notice, and I did talk to the superintendent about it quickly last night offline, you will also notice, and it shouldn't be a shock, that that's exactly the day before school starts. I believe school starts September second this year, but I believe the state in there, they did approve the emergency assistance shelter legislation, I think just yesterday. And whatever's in that, the state is handling this. On my final note on this, I just want to get it on the record, I get emails and questions about this all the time. It just, I just want to emphasize it one more time. I can't believe this still comes up, but the Town of Franklin, the local government, and the school committee, we may have done our job like we do in any type of situation that has an emergency affiliated with it. But we had zero control over this. This did not, there was no public input on this. This was a decision that the governor and/or other state officials made. I still get emails, even as of this week, you know, blaming the town for all of this, or me, or you guys and others. And I just want to, while we're here, just say that the Town of Franklin never had any role in making these decisions. These were state decisions. Other officials made this. But as this is wrapping up, I do think it is warranted to, again, we haven't done this in a while, Mr. Chairman, because of the vendor that did eventually take over the hotel and receive that contract from the state. Fortunately, our volunteers, many of you, many of others, many of the audience, many listening at home, many organizations in town, like SAFE or the Interfaith Coalition, and many, many others, the Food Pantry, we could go on and on. I just can't thank the residents of this town and the organizations in this community. I frequently, as you know, talk to a lot of state officials, and one of the things they always say to me was how incredible of a job this community did handling this situation. We all know the federal immigration system is broken. We all know that there's been problems at the state level with financing of these issues. But it's something that we should be very proud of, and we should be very thankful and grateful to the organizations and the volunteers and people that stepped up to the plate to make that situation as safe as possible for everybody, for the community, for our residents, but also for the folks at that hotel. You know, I hope there's a time to reflect on really truly heroic work that many organizations did in this community to make that situation stable and safe for everybody. I know it came up last week, or a couple of weeks ago, at the fire chief's presentation, but our department heads, you know, Kathy Liberty, our chiefs, you know, I could go down the list. I'm sure I'm forgetting a lot of great people. Library, of course, Callie and Felicia. As this wraps up, in August thirty-first, the Best Western will be closed for the emergency shelter site. And I think we should all be grateful at the incredible work we all did to try to make that as positive as possible. So I appreciate you giving me a few minutes to give that update, and I know that's some information each one of you is going to want to relay to various constituencies and people that ask you questions as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, Subcommittee Republicans, capital has not met. Economic Development has. Councilor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair, yes, the Economic Development Subcommittee met this evening before the May and Council meeting, and we had two items on our agenda, one that will come before the Town Council, where we are adding to the use table and a description of shared kitchens, shared kitchen bylaws on our list of things that we wanted to get done. It's a section of, of, of the goal, and so I'm really excited about that. Gus Brown and Kathy Liberty worked really hard on that for us. And we also discussed renaming the commercial one zoning area around Union Street and Cotton Street, to rename it to the Crossing Neighborhood District. And then we're, we're going to hopefully take the master plan and then try to, and try to push a little bit of the zoning to follow the master plan there. And that will come in a couple of weeks, in a couple of meetings. I don't know. I wouldn't say weeks, I guess. Maybe a little bit longer than that. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hamblin. Okay, Budget Subcommittee, we are deep into our Joint Budget Subcommittee Listening Sessions. We've had three. We have three more to go. The next one, as I stated earlier, is Tuesday morning at nine-thirty at the Senior Center. The following, the next one is the twelfth here, Council Chambers.
March eighth.
Hey, hey, sorry.
It's a Saturday from ten to twelve, virtually. Also, the big one there was, I think people asked for a virtual.
That's the first one that will be, the only one that will be virtual, and people will be able to zoom in and be a part of it. And then the final one is at Franklin High School on the sixteenth.
Twelfth.
Twelve. I got so many dates. Sixteenth is the, is the council.
You sound like Councilor Jones.
No. Go anywhere but there. Okay, but the, uh, listening sessions have been going very well. I think the last one that was very successful. And looking forward to more community involvement, involvement, more community input. Please, folks, come out, tell us, ask us questions, tell us your concerns. You have a great opportunity, where you have the three legislative bodies that are dealing with the budget altogether, subcommittees of all three, being the Finance Committee, the School Committee, and the Council. So please come out, join us, ask questions. And then, so that's it for the Budget Subcommittee. Police Station Building Committee, we did meet last, last evening, and we hadn't met in a while. We met with the architect and the project manager, and it was basically just an introduction of the architectural team that will be leading the project. Over the next few months, they'll be looking at different sites, and, you know, the Police Station Building Committee probably won't get together again until probably sometime summer, two or three months probably, before there'll be enough information that they'll need to speak to the building committee to move forward. But they, they are beginning to evaluate sites. We identified three sites with them that they're looking at, Davis there, Palmerter, and there was a site on Grove Street, but we kind of decided last night that that site really wasn't big enough, and we would have had to purchase that site. The other two we own, so that certainly won't be an issue. So more to come, and as it comes, we'll bring it forward. Gatra, Councilor Frangello?
If not met.
Okay, super. Future agenda items. Counselor Sheridan?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Frangello?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Hamblin?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Conmea Ledger?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Counselor Chandler?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Plague? Counselor Jones?
No, sir.
All right, counselor comments. Let's mix it up. Counselor Hamblin?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair. So, you know, I wanted to thank everybody for very respectful discussions that we've had during the past few joint budget listening sessions. It's been great having people come out, hearing from the town staff and the school committee, and, and people just asking really good questions. It's been great. Also, Monday night at the Legislative Forum for the School Committee was, everything was like, the questions were really, everybody was very respectful, and I think we got a lot of answers, and we got a lot of really good discussions. But unfortunately, elsewhere, at the Planning Committee, the Planning Board, there's a different scene. And, and so I just want to say that I want to support my fellow elected officials on the Planning Board, and just say, like, they're, they're volunteers, they're trying to do their best, they're following the rules and the processes that they have to follow. And it just really makes me sad that they had to be, that they were treated like that. And I want to apologize to them and the rest of the community, frankly, because it was really, it's really embarrassing to, if that ever gets out, I think. It's just not the way we want to do, we do things. And Vice, Vice Chair Worling said it, when you disrespect one of us, you are disrespecting all of us. And I think that, that just needs to be said, and I apologize to the Planning Board. They didn't need that kind of stuff. So I, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Hamblin. Counselor Chandler?
I'm going to say nothing at this time tonight.
Counselor Frangello?
Sure. I wanted to underline a few of the upcoming discussions, if you're, if you want to jump in. One is that Arts Discussion at the Black Box. And again, thanks to the Black Box for always opening up their space for, for such conversations. That's at noon next Wednesday. Senator Roush is hosting her Small Business Roundtable, which has been pretty effective. Now, I was trying to pull up the name of, of the person that she's bringing in, but it, it's a, it's a big deal that you're going to be able to speak directly to a top official in the state about the strains on our small businesses. So that's at one P M. on March eleventh. And you can reach out to, to me, or really reach out to her office, if you're interested in being a part of that. And then the final thing was, was those budget listening sessions. If you have been to the budget listening center, or if you haven't been to the budget listening sessions, I think that you're missing out on a fantastic conversation, and, and really a showcase, as you said, of the best of what Franklin has to offer in terms of civic engagement. Really, really insightful, thought-out, respectful comments and questions and feedback and dialogue, and, and those have been terrific. And if you haven't, I recommend going, or encouraging your friends to go. Regardless, anyone who, who cares about this town should be talking about how our budget is, you know, for the services that you got in the past year, in order to offer those services again, that would take three-point-six million dollars more than we have right now. And, you know, however you feel about the way to deal with that, you should be talking about how we're going to move forward. We're not talking about expanding our services. We're not talking about restoring our services, just the services that you got to enjoy in the past year, three-point-six million dollars short of delivering that. So that should be top of mind for any person who cares about the health of this community from now until, until we solve it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Counselor Conmea Ledger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to certainly echo Counselor Hamblin's remarks that we are all volunteers, and we are all working really, really hard. I've been to more meetings in the last two weeks and seen more people in the community than my own kids. I've been to more meetings in the last two weeks and seen more people in the community than my own kids between the joint budget listening sessions, the time at the Senior Center, the Legislative Forum, and then just responding to everybody online as best I can and inquiries. Like, there's a lot that goes into these jobs. And we're happy to do them, but we need the public to be respectful. And we need the public to be engaged in these civic conversations in an appropriate way. So I'm very sorry to have heard about what happened at the Planning Board meeting. And I hope that as a community, we can heal from that and figure out a better, far more mature way to talk about our differences. I do want to say thank you to everybody that has come to all of those meetings, though, because we'd be pretty boring if it was just us sitting around talking to each other, right? So it's, you know, we had a very, a pretty big packed room at the Legislative Forum. The three listening sessions so far have been well attended with different faces. I want to not just thank the community that got up to the mic and spoke, but we heard from a lot of staff. We heard from a lot of department heads. We heard from folks that we don't hear from all the time that like, got up to the mic and said, this is why this stuff is important. Here's a little snapshot of a day in my life. The police chief, the fire chief, our head librarian. You know, fantastic stuff. We're very, very lucky. I've said it here so many times. We are so lucky to have what we have in our town. We just have to figure this little money piece out. And it's, it's no small feat. I just, just today, for any of you sports families out there, my son is trying out for baseball, and I looked that up today, and that's $600 on top of the $1,000 that I already spent for him to play football. So that's $1,600. And you know what? I'll find it somehow, some way, because he's my kid. But these are, that's more money than I would have spent if the override had passed. So if you're a sports family out there and you're feeling this burden like I am, give some consideration to, if I spent the same amount of money, I could help a whole bunch of people with more services and continuing the great life that we have here in town versus what it means to me. And I know that these are challenging conversations, but man, that's a hard whack to take as a dad. And let's see, for any of you that want to come and hear about our fantastic town administrator, tomorrow night is the public meeting for his review at 7:00 o'clock here. I get the benefit of chairing that Subcommittee this year, so come and listen to all the great things that he's doing and all the great goals that he's met. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier-Ledger. Councilor Sheridan?
Nothing to add.
Councilor Plaguey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I have a question for Jamie. On the ZVA, I had brought this up another time and wanted to know when are they going to restore their meetings for the public, not on Zoom, but in person?
The discretion is unilaterally at the, at the chair's discretion. None of you can, none of us can vote to force them to do that, just like nobody can tell you how to run the meetings in person as well. I have made it very clear to every member of the ZVA, including the two that were recently appointed, Janelle Lang and Joe Halligan. Both of them told me, they also said, I believe publicly, that they wanted in-person meetings. And the ZVA has still not had an in-person meeting in years. I don't know where the hang-up is. Not trying to fight fire with fire here. I'm just calling balls and strikes as I see them. This is just the facts, Jack. So it is disappointing to me. I've made that clear to all of them. But the members of that committee have to tell the chair they want to meet in person. And the chair has his right under current state law to choose remote only. I would note, my last comment, Councilor Plaguey, would be, as Amy and I know, we work with a lot of other communities. She worked in another community as well before coming here. There are Boards of Selectment, equivalents to you, who have still never met in person since the pandemic. And I believe in Franklin, the only board that does not meet in public here in the chamber is the ZVA. Every other board does. The Board of Health meets up in the third floor room. I'm sure some boards have an occasional need for a meeting Zoom only. That's okay. I understand that. I think there's a lot of committee meetings, to Councilor Cormier-Ledger's point. But the ZVA, for whatever reason, just does not want to meet in person. So.
And where you are the Appointing Authority, you have no right to tell them that you would want them to go back to a regular meeting? I'm hearing this from people on the outside.
Yep.
And I'm hearing some very bad stories too about the chairman as far as being here in Franklin and being away out of the state.
These are deliberations. I mean, we can't, these, you know, this section of Councilor Comments, we have to kind of, at some point, I think, we can't be asking myself questions like this and having a dialogue, Councilor Plaguey. It's not posted on the agenda. We hear you. I hear you. I've made it clear to him how it is. His, by the way, his appointment as ZVA chair is up on this June 30th.
It's up on June 30th?
Yep. So his term is up this June. And he knows exactly where I stand on the issue. I'll just, I'll just end it at that.
And I think that's a good ending. Thank you.
Council Jones?
I'm just ditto to everything that's been said. Everyone's already said everything that needs to be said. So I just throw in a cute little bow and wish Councilor Sheridan a happy birthday, which was February 18th. We haven't had a chance to be in council, so I wish him a happy birthday. Happy birthday. 29 all over again?
Give or take. Thank you, Councilor Jones. Again, I would just reiterate what Councilor Hamblin said and what Councilor Frangello said as far as upcoming events and how important the Joint Budget Subcommittee Listening Sessions are. And as far as the Planning Board goes, folks, we are all here as volunteers because we love our community. That's why we do this. But we're, to be verbally abused is something that should not happen to any board. And as Councilor Hamblin said, you say it to, you say it to one, you're saying it to all. So I respect Councilor Hamblin's comment. And I would also like to apologize to the Planning Board that they had to deal with that the way they did. Okay, with that, we do have a need. And we have two exemptions for an executive session. The first is to review and approve minutes from Town Council Executive Sessions. And the second exemption is number three, which is collective bargaining, all municipal unions to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, I so declare. We will not return to open session. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to enter it into executive session for two exemptions. One, exemption to review and approve minutes for the Town Council Executive Sessions. And B, exemption number three, collective bargaining. All municipal unions to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of a public body and the chair so declares, we will not, not to return to open session.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to enter executive session. Rule call, vote. Clerk will call the rule.
Cormier-Ledger?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Chandler?
Yes.
Frangello?
Yes.
Plaguey?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Jones, yes. One absent, chair?
Yes.
That's eight and one absent, sir.
Motion carries. I'd just like to note-